Mr. Chairman, you ready? The council is returning from executive session again about 10:04.7. Any action of the council is resolved with executive session, Mr. Roblo.
No, Your Honor.
Right. Then we'll call the City Attorney to order the rise of Commissioner Monica to tell him if an application has been made.
Dear Lord, we want to thank you for this beautiful spring-like day that you have given us. We want to thank you for this great city of Grapevine that we have to live in. We ask that tonight you be with us as we make decisions that affect this city both now and in the future. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
.......................................
All right. Thank you very much. We welcome you to our meeting tonight. We here have five public hearings scheduled, twenty plans on the commission and the council. Procedure will be that we'll declare each of these public hearings open individually. We give the applicant, first we'll ask the staff to introduce the request. We give the applicant the opportunity to present their case. And any guests present that would like to speak for or against the application will be given that right. If you don't speak and you're not an applicant, you may register with Jody Brown. She'll have a record of your attendance. She has a yellow form for you to fill out. And she'll call them in the order that you've registered. The Plan Zone Commission then stays the request and makes recommendations to the council. So we'll begin, and if you haven't registered and you know you want to speak, come on up during the proceedings and register. We will begin by declaring open zoning application Z14-1. Ron Stonwell, staff will introduce the request.
Thank you, Mayor. We have an address of 1301 West Wall Street for this request. It's located northeast corner of West Wall Street at Pennington Drive, currently zone PO Professional Office District. And request is to rezone approximately 45,000 square feet from PO to R75 Single Family District. Area zoning to the north is HC Highway Commercial District and R75 to the south, we've got Professional Office District and R75, as well as to the east and to the west, we have R75 at PO. This property currently zone PO is intended to be rezoned R75 and replanted into a single family lot that's immediately adjacent to the south. This property was rezoned back in November of 2012 from PO to R75 as well. We have the property owner, Mr. Lilwick, here to speak to the request.
You ready? All right, I'll be there.
Any questions?
No, we just decided we didn't want anything there but green grass and fence. That's our request. I just want to maintain what we presently have. We don't want development back there, as well as we want to maintain this sort of look like. That's all we want. Any questions?
Questions?
We have any questions from the council?
Where is the fence going to be and what will the fence look like?
Fence is already there. Fence is already there, Sheriff.
Up on wall?
Yes, ma'am.
I haven't driven down the wall yet. What does it look like?
Nash bar. It's a cedar post in B mesh, known as L wood wire, with a top wire of the bar business wire, not a perm yet.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roblo.
Good.
Do we have any letters or petitions?
We have three letters that have support. Copy one for you.
Do we have any motion to speak?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so motion closed, public hearing?
Motion closed.
Second.
All favor. Motion closed, motion of the council.
Motion closed, public hearing?
Second.
All favor, all opposed, motion carries. Public hearing is now open on C U conditional use application 14 that Mr. Stonwell.
We have an address of 112 East Worth Street for this particular request. It's located at southeast corner of Jenkins and East Texas Street. Currently zone CBD Central Business District. Request this evening is simply to allow on all premise consumption of wine in conjunction with a winery and outdoor seating. Applicant intends to occupy approximately 1,600 square feet of a 3100 square foot building as part of the three building complex at Jenkins and East Worth Street. This particular structure has its frontage on, I keep saying Worth Street, East Texas Street, pardon me. The proposed winery has seating for 28 patrons, that'd be 16 indoor and 12 outdoor and outdoor patio. Twenty parking spaces are required for the request. There are 26 onsite that are intended for patrons to use this onsite parking to share with the other tenants, as well as surrounding parking before 7:00 PM. After 7:00 PM, the entire park lot will be available for customers to the public winery. We have Mr. Ralph Madison here to speak to the request.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protim, City Council, Plan Zone Commission, citizens of Grapevine. My name is Ralph Masson, co-owner of Stone Williams Winery. Tonight with me I have my partner, co-owner, Mr. Alan Coons, our architect, Mr. Austin Flinney. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and answer any questions you may have on the conditional use application 1402. I apologize if you hear a little bit of fluctuation in my voice. I'm not used to speaking here in front of this forum. I definitely look speaker to more a pretty loud person. So I'll try to move over a little bit not to blow any by any way. Me and Alan started this endeavor probably 15 years ago. We met in the military. Our company is based off upon integrity. And we want to bring the first winery to Grapevine, which will be 100% veteran owned. We're excited about the opportunity. We've done our feasibility studies for the last 16 months in your city. It came down to Grapevine, Addison, and Frisco because more and more people are starting to move into this space, the winery. As you may know, Texas is the fifth largest producer of wine in the state, and it continues to grow and grow at a rapid pace. I'm a resident of Flowerland. I've been here for 10 years. I've been in your city for those 10 years. And quite frankly, what brought me to your city was the historic area and the wine. As I continued to come down here and learn more and more about your city, it became evident to me and Alan that this is where we wanted to be. We have met with the CDB, Mr. McCowell, Mr. Woody, your economic development in your city, with Mr. Dan Truex and other key leaders and business people in the community. And everybody's been very welcoming and supportive of bringing a winery to this town. So we're very excited for the opportunity. I would like to make one distinction as what we plan on doing. We plan on bringing a true winery to Grapevine, not just a winery and moniker and that name only. We plan on bringing every fruit, de-stem, crush, press, ferment, age, bottle, and distribute. We plan on bringing Texas with a Texas theme to Grapevine. Our focus is on Texas wine. We've already created synergies with the High Plains ABA and the Hill Country ABA to bring this wine into Grapevine. So we're pretty excited about the opportunity to meet with you tonight, to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, please, ma'am?
Yeah, just, I didn't see in here letter kind of hours operations.
Yes, sir. Currently, our plan is for Monday through Thursday from 11:00 to 9:00 PM, Friday 7:00, Friday, Saturday from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and Sunday from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM. We arrive at those hours because they're the allowable hours for the TABC in the state of Texas. We'd like to have, obviously, just like any business owner, flexibility to modify that down. We have to based off the supply and demand. But it was important to us to at least go into this venture thinking, okay, what are we allowing? What are the allowable hours? And what do we think will work? During our extensive research here, we found out that these hours are very comparable to all other wineries and other facilities you may already have down in downtown area.
So just, I'm just trying to understand between what you just said and what's in here. Is this, is this more of a, are you putting together more of like a blind production and sales facility, or is it a blind bar? Is it a place to hang out and bring wine or just come in and purchase? It's, I mean, it's a small, it's a pretty small space. And you talked about, you know, it sounds to be like a pretty good size operation in terms of fermentation and everything.
Yeah, but really the scope and scale of what we're doing, we believe, works in that space very easily for what we're already seeing, what your typical wineries are doing in Grapevine already, sir. So, I mean, yes, there will be a lounge, there will be a tasting area, there will be an indoor area for people to congregate, as well as an outdoor patio area. And the space that we've had and designed, there should be no problem being able to handle, handle that process. I mean, currently, right now, what's happening is a lot of people, like I said, my definition of a winery is that of the state of Texas is different than what you may be accustomed to or seen. Some wineries that, we use that term, are bringing in revival juices from out of state. And they'll bring it in and they'll pitch some yeast and so forth, and ferment there onsite, and they will bottle. And, and that's great. There's nothing wrong with that model at all. And, you know, we have the opportunity to do that as well. What we want to do is make it something that's unique to the city. And we don't see this anywhere on Main Street or anywhere in this area, is be able to have a process of bringing that fruit in. We already have the infrastructure and equipment in place. And if it wasn't doable, I wouldn't be in front of you today.
Okay, so in the evenings, it kind of is a wine bar? Or is it really just more of a treat to a taste? Can you come in? I'm just trying to see with the nature, what's the ambiance going to be like in the evenings? Is it still just kind of more open for people to come in and do tastings and purchase?
Absolutely.
Is it?
It'll be similar to what Divine is doing, what Silvino is doing, where people will be able to come in with their friends and fellowships, go up to a wine tasting area of our, grab tastings, be able to buy bottles, drink there on premises. They want to buy it for consumption and take, or purchase and take it onsite, they will. But yes, we plan on this being a wine tasting area. It will have a wine bar area. It will have a wine seating area as well. Our production area will be separate, will be walled off from where our patrons are sitting.
Yeah, I was like, don't get me wrong, I love it. And you've taken my ultimate business plan. I'd love to do something too, but I'm just trying to get a better feel for what it is, what caught my attention when you talked about the wine production so much. It seems like that maybe takes up some space and there's not, you know, there's not a lot of it. I think I got a better feel for it.
Yeah, yes, sir. We're not talking about trying to break semi-truck loads and crush crazy tons and tons. We just want to bring that experience to people when they come to downtown Grapevine, so they can, they can see what actually happens where they decide to take a grape and this is the end result. That's what we want to do.
No questions?
Yeah, on your parking situation, you've got eight spots. This has listed 12 open up at 6:00 PM, 6:00 open up at 7:00 PM. Guessing is that Monday through Friday? I'm curious on what kind of parking you have available on the weekend.
Yes, when I was working on the parking analysis plan, and one of the reasons we chose the site because we don't understand the restrictions of our limitations on some of the areas of the parking. So we looked at this area. We have nine spots that are dedicated, allowed to us. I've talked to the owners of someone next door, Sheila, Mustang Printing, David, and the people that were the Jamison's who were renting the facility from. There, none of the spaces are ever filled during the week. And most of the traffic that's going to come from what we see is going to happen more around 6 o'clock on closing. But we thought it was important to show you how many spaces would open. We don't view our winery as a sole single destination spot, just like when most people come to Grapevine, they're not coming just to one area to park. But we will, we do expect a lot of pedestrian traffic. When we went around the city and looked at current wineries and current shops that are around town, we didn't see anybody that had any of the parking available to them onsite that we actually could control or own or pre-program with, with our neighboring tenants to have that parking. So the parking that we have, and I'm sorry if I need to go back and re-clarify is that the nine spaces that we'll have to us, we'll have 12 after 6:00, and that's when you start to see our influx. And we'll have another 6 after 7:00. Also, on the parking analysis plan, we have lots C, D, E, F, and G, which is public parking and designated such, which is 226 locations. Well, the great thing about all that parking is less than a tenth of a mile from our place. It's easy walking distance. And while I know that other businesses obviously want to share that free parking, we feel that with us being able to offer our 26, our 20, yeah, our 26 spots to our patrons will answer the parking act way in that area.
I guess what I'm curious about is, are those other 18 spots that are normally open after 6:00, are they going to be available on Saturday and Sunday? Are the businesses closed? What do we got?
The hair salon is open during that time. And Mustang Printing, I have to talk to David, but my understanding is he's mostly Monday through Friday. But he's got, he has nine spots, for example, but he's got three employees. So there's six other spots. Not many people are coming there to the printing, you know, like that. I mean, really, there seems to be an abundance of spots that are always there available, sir, that we've seen.
And do you have any intentions for outdoor music or speakers in the patio?
No, sir, we don't. One of the things that we noticed when we came to downtown Grapevine that there seems to be, oh, I'll just put it this way, no, sir, we don't. We're not going to have any outdoor speakers outside our TVs. We want to create an environment where it's comfortable, it's cozy, where the fellowship and enjoying the wine tastes present in that over music or TVs or sporting events of that nature.
A question.
Yes, ma'am.
Does the hair salon take up the rest of the building? I can't remember. Is there vacant space in the rest of the building?
No, ma'am. Sheila owns the other half of the building over there, the salon. So she has the other four spots in front of my hand. She has additional parking in the rear as well.
No questions? No questions?
Any questions from the council? It appears your entrance off of Texas Street?
Yes, sir. There's two ways to access the building. The main door is off of Texas though.
And you want outdoor seating right across from the church?
It's on the, let me see, it's going to be on the...
Church property.
No, it's not on the church property.
It's right across the street.
No, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is that, when you say right across, we are, it's, the outdoor area will be on the west side? Yeah, it'll be on the west side, going to the far end from where the church is. And actually blocked within...
They like it's on Texas Street. It's a big north.
It's on the northwest, the northwest corner of the building, sir. As you're setting, the church is this way over here. If our building's facing the Texas here, we're on this end of the building.
There's several buildings there. So you want outdoor seating right there?
Yeah, on the northwest side there.
All right. Anybody else?
Are you proposing to make any changes to the exterior facade of the building?
As of current, set's no, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any questions? Do we have any letters of petition?
We have two letters, two letters of support that have been submitted and I do have a speaker.
Thank you, sir.
You have what?
Request to speak. Carl Young, 4113, matter of draft.
Council and P and Z. Unfortunately, I kind of know what I'm talking about this tonight. And I'm surprised with P and Z that asked the questions earlier. I'm looking at this floor plan. I didn't know about the church restrictions being too close to a wine tasting place. I think about Wisconsin, where Wisconsin town is designated by a Catholic church across the street. I wonder if that's the case right here. Looking at the drawing, I see one bathroom. I see a work area that probably will be a kitchen. And it brings up an interesting question. Today it's a winery. Tomorrow it's wine tasting. And then we have a farina, which becomes a restaurant. I'll talk about that later on in the end of this meeting. My question to P and Z, why aren't you asking these questions when it comes to floor plans? One, bathroom for this? That's ridiculous. Why wasn't it asked that this is close to the church like Mayor Tate just did? These are questions that are important, not counting the parking. Now, I know one of you people did come ask about the parking. And I had to salute Larry earlier this evening. He tried pushing the rest of you people about some of these questions. But one bathroom in a winery, and a winery that tomorrow may be a restaurant? Think about it. Thank you.
Any more?
No, ma'am.
Be the most closest public hearing. All clear. They close? Motion from the council.
Motion closed.
All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Public hearing is closed on C U 1402. Public hearing is now open on C U 1404.
We have an address of 1216 West Northwest Highway. It's located northeast corner of North Dove Road and West Northwest Highway. Currently zone HC Highway Commercial District. And our request is simply to amend the previously approved site plan specifically to allow the reuse of a former self-service car wash into an unmanned ice and water vending machine. Originally approved in 1991 as a convenience store with gasoline sales, all premise beer wine sales, along with a 20-foot pole sign and car wash. It's the applicant's intent to adaptively reuse the inoperable car wash and turn it into a self-service ice and water vending machine. The interior structure will be modified to hold the necessary equipment. And the dispensing of product will occur along the south and western sides of the building. The applicant intends to make some improvements to the site. He's included adding five more parking spaces to the site, adding new paint and stone accents to the structure, some protective ballers, and some traffic control signage at the entrance off of Northwest Highway, limiting it to right in and right out. If you do consider to improve this this evening, will be the first reading of the ordinance. The site will need to go to the board of zoning adjustment on March 3rd for non-conforming items of all condo space and at purpose government. And with that, I'll introduce Mr. Marcel to speak briefly.
Mr. Mayor, council, and commission, thank you for hearing our proposal. So I think you did a very good job of articulating all the improvements. I don't have a lot to add there. We will be also adding the dumpster screen around the dumpster that's there, as well as detailing the landscaping around the outside. There's very limited green space currently, but it's also disrepair. There's railing that we will have to take out and some pre-apply the parking spaces that we're going to add. But primarily, we're going to upgrade the building, put a new roof on the building, paint it, put some stone facade, and make it a first-class building with a first-class service. So any questions?
Questions? No questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman?
No.
Questions from the council?
Yeah, are you, you're going to be putting a new roof on the service station building or...
The car wash. Car wash is all rusted. And so we're going to put a new roof on it completely. So it's benefit from adjoining the building. And it provides some fire.
Including any new landscaping, is that...
The only thing that we have considered that we didn't articulate that was just cleaning up what is currently there. The only thing that we actually have on our plan that we did not articulate, propose, was some shrubbery between the two buildings, our building and the waffle way beside us.
So the, what is currently a car wash is now going to become this ice house, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's what's getting new roof?
Yes, sir. It's the...
Car wash is going away because it hasn't been serviced, is that correct?
It's been abandoned for 12 years, yes, sir.
And this is just painted, seen, new wall?
It's a gray block right now.
The new, the new ice house.
Well, we're going to repaint the surface there. We're going to put white stone around the bottom and around the front. Put bricks in all of the current openings and regular doors.
Where's the compressor to go to the services machine?
The compressor?
Yeah.
Which is going to be thrown away?
That serves the ice, the cool...
Oh, it's on top. So the roof will cover it as well. It'll be screened completely from, from view. Both the ice machine and the condensing unit keeps the refrigerated building cold. They are both on the roof.
Will this be open in a 24-hour period?
24? Yes, sir. 24.
Life sign all the time?
I'm sorry.
Lights, outside lights?
Sure. Under the awnings, we have a couple of wall packs on the side, but very, very limited lighting. The current car on the current convenience store provides enough lighting, but we're going to put light underneath the awnings so that people can see to interface with the vending.
Is this a drive-through or would it be a...
No, sir, it's a drive-up.
It's a drive-up?
Yes, sir. You have to get out of your car, go back to the ice, or push a cooler into the chute, and it drops into your cooler. Or water dispenser on the side of the building.
So how do you sell the ice? I mean, is it, you bring your own container or bags?
Well, there's two ways. You can get it in a bag, just like you would from any convenience store, but it's crunched, put in a bag as you're standing there. Or you can put your cooler on the ground, and then there's a chute that drops it directly into your cooler. So you can get it either way. You have a selection on what you want. So, and then there's a water dispenser also. You can bring your own bottle, in feeling one gallon, three gallons, five gallons.
And it's not the council's decision or the proffessor's vote? You think it's worthwhile?
Yes, sir. By my, by my statement, I return.
Well, you know, I'd like to give you, one thing, car wash that has been closed for some time is an ice room.
Yes, sir.
And I'm glad to see that we're maybe looking at something to perhaps clean that up and address that upside. Quite honestly, Mr. Sellers, a facility that's open 24 hours a day selling ice and water, I, I'm not sure I'm really comfortable with that. Be that as may, I appreciate your presentation.
Sir, as I researched this, I started visiting other locations of these ice houses. And there are citizens from Grapevine that actually visit other locations because it's a very, very valuable service. 20 pounds of ice for $2, as opposed to 10 pounds of ice for $2. And the average is about 120 bags a day are sold through these. On the weekends around 300 bags per day.
Where are these other facilities located?
I'm sorry?
Where are these other facilities located?
Aubrey, Dallas, Carrollton. There's about 52 of them in downtown Dallas, all over the vicinity there. There's Colony, Autumns.
Round here, look?
No.
Did you say Grapevine's citizens actually drive there to...
Yes, yes. So this is five days a week. These are orkmen, landscape people, carpenters... The water comes out at thirty-three to thirty-five degrees, so they bring their water jugs and their ice, and they're doing, they are, have a punch pot. They use them so often, so. I use the one in Car, in the Colony myself, and I mean, I stand in on and off of.
Well, you tell me about the price of ice, and I, I certainly bought bottled water. So how does your price for the water compare to bottled water?
So we're ten cents cheaper than you can get at Whole Foods or other places per gallon. I'm selling five gallons for one dollar, which is significant, about fifty percent of what you would pay at Whole Foods for the same amount of water.
What is the source of your water that you're selling?
I'm sorry?
What is the source of the water that you are selling? Is it Old City of Greatvine Water?
It's your water, but it's filtered three times and softened, and we are considering also putting reverse osmosis in it. So it's taking your current utility, standard water, and I run it through a filtration three times. I'm sorry?
Triple filtering?
Yes, ma'am.
Let me ask you another question. Are, are you going to do any of the repairs that you've listed in here that are needed if you do not get the zoning approved tonight or this that you're seeking?
Oh, if, if I can't do it, I wouldn't touch the site at all.
You wouldn't do anything that you've listed in here as far as the deficiencies? You wouldn't make repairs to any of those that is going forward?
Well, I'm not sure I'm understanding your question, but if I'm not able to put the business in there, I would walk away because it makes no sense for me to make any improvements to the site.
You're just leasing.
I am just leasing. I'm a sub, sub-leasedor, yes, sir. I have talked to the owner, and the owner is extremely excited about us doing this now. The owner leases to the Greatvine market, and they also are very excited about us doing this because we're doing some improvements that will make the whole site better. But if I am not able to put the business in there, there would be no reason for me to make any upgrades.
So, so the owner of the property is not here tonight, is that correct?
No. But I have all of the, their approval, et cetera. Again, they're excited, and that's turned in as part of our factor.
The one thing that really got my attention, and it, and it got it big time, is that one of the deficiencies that is listed that would be corrected is exposed live electrical circuits inside and outside of the building, presenting numerous safety hazards. And I'm trying to figure out why in the world would anybody in the building let that be on their property and not having fixed it already?
Understood. And, and I've already taken care of that, just simply because I'm over there working, cleaning it up, and I just took care of all of the electrical issues. Already taken everything out.
I think that particular corner is, is an active corner like all the other corners where people can go in and, and buy a soft drink or a six-pack of beer or whatever. I think particularly since you're so close to the lake, and that's one of the access points that people go down Dove to get to the lake and stop to buy ice. I happen to think it's a, I don't really have a big problem with the use. I guess for me personally, since a lot of people know my husband had this rotator cuff surgery, I've had to buy ice every day, which has cost me like five dollars a day for these little bags of ice. So I have a personal excitement to have something where I can get ice pretty easily. And if you're talking about those larger bags, I mean, I certainly appreciate the comments of others, but I don't personally have a big problem. I'm, I'm appreciative that you're going to improve some of these safety issues and give a better appearance to the property. I think that property's been in need of that for a very long time. It's a pretty active corner, particularly in the summer. I do think that doing that landscaping area that you're talking about and putting in some shrubs and so forth is really important, and a general cleanup of that overall property, I think would be really critical to do.
Okay.
Of, of the existing building, how much of that will you be using for this operation? It'll still be generally an empty building at most, or?
Um, it, we actually showed us the floor plan of the building. There's going to be about sixteen feet in the back part of the building where we will have spare parts and storage for bags and things like that. But it's simply going to be just a storage area behind the vending equipment. Now, the vending plant creates the ice is twenty-four feet by nine feet by nine feet. So it consumes most of the interior of the car wash, so.
And then as far as the exterior walls, basically, we'll, we'll still see the same walls, they'll just be painted, and then the, the two feet of stonework along the bottom as a facility.
Correct. And, and the front will be stoned also, have some little attractive columns. So where they walk up to their interface, it'll be a very nice area with awnings over it. It's a, it's an attractive, it'll be a first-class building.
When people pull in there, I guess, you know, given where the vending area is there on the south side of the building, I'm trying to figure out where they're going to park.
Well, there is room to park in front, right up to the ballers on the right side.
Will that block the entryway?
It really, it really doesn't. I mean, it's, it's currently used that way today in practice, and people, you can see where the actual cars go around that area. But then we're also providing five additional parking spaces.
But they're not right next to the vending area?
Well, actually across the driveway and along the side, and there at the very back. Yes, sir.
I guess I'm wondering if it makes sense to change the facade of where the vending is to be a little more proximate to where the likely parking, well, it should be. Because what I fear here is that with the vending on the south side, people are going to park right there, which is not park parking, end up blocking the entryway and just causing other problems.
Well, it could be. There's one space there, and someone parks there regularly, like I said, in practice. And, but it does not interfere with the drive currently unless two people are trying to get off. That's one of the reasons we're going to put signs there to say how we want people to exit.
But you're not planning to mark it that way, right?
I'm sorry?
You're not planning to mark that parking accordingly, you're?
No, we are not going to mark that as a parking space, no, sir.
Expecting the people to park there in spite of the fact that it's not marked as a parking place?
Well, expecting them to park there, I don't think that we're, you know, marking it off to be used. We're giving five additional parking spaces. And if it's currently being used, I would not expect someone to park there.
I've seen several of these. They're all new, and they're, I, I thought nicely designed. I think they would, it would be, it's what like the ones I've seen, I'm sure it is, it'd be an upgrade to what's there now. My problem would be that you don't have a lot of construction workers pulling trailers, pulling them there to get ice, and what that's going to do, the whole operation where they're going to be able to park. That only occurs from, I imagine, early in the morning, but it, it would be the issue that I'd be more concerned about than, than the, than the facility, because the facility's very nice. They were, when I was a kid, they were something very similar to those around country, and they all disappeared. And these are a little brighter than those here to be, but the same kind of shape and the same kind of concept.
It's actually a patented system that's been in place for over seven years too, so it's, it's a, it's a new way to make ice, actually. So to address the boats and the large trailers, the space, and I've actually done this with a trailer, I've been able to drive through because there's two, if you will, makeshift drives that people use in the back of this property, so they're able to drive through and exit, and there's plenty of room for them to turn around as well because of the size of this particular lot. Very, very, very conducive to flow through, and we're going to do a little bit of help. Other questions?
Any other questions from the council? All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have any letters or petitions?
We have one letter of opposition and one letter of concern, copy to you.
Evaluation to speak.
Yes, ma'am. Michael Garrett, two oh five, North Lucas.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council on Planning and Zoning. I just wanted to voice my opinion against this proposal on the property that's adjacent to the north side of this property that goes from Dove to Lucas. I represent myself owning the property, and I also represent Linda with Waffle Way. We're both opposed to the twenty-four hour unmanned operation due to people having access to maybe breaking the machines or loitering or something like that. We're not real pleased with what we think the aesthetics of this would be along Northwest Highway, and what I know the city plan's doing with Northwest Highway. And then I'm also opposed to it for the more traffic in the alley, the people that cut through there without the proper fencing that's been locked down, not put back up, and create more traffic in the alley and take a chance of damaging my fence, which I've had to replace already. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Chairman Yacko, nine twenty, Reagan Wood.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Council. I, I didn't come here to speak on this tonight, but I saw it pop up and I felt I needed to. This is my beer store. So I would love to see an ice machine going because there have been times when I needed ice, but to go to Tom's or something like that would be inconvenient. This is only three quarters of a mile from my house. I think it makes sense, I've used them many times, not necessarily here, but in Austin when I first saw them. I'm a frequent user of the store, but I don't see really the, a lot of times people park right against the store, or they're parking pumps, in the argument that it's a twenty-four hour business and it's going to bring more people, well, the guests, the pumps are twenty-four hour, and that brings some people too, so. I just see it as a, a nice convenience, but I'd like to see them everywhere, and I, and I know other people would too, so. Thank you.
No, ma'am, that's all. I, I have a question to stay. I noticed that Mr. Garrett submitted his opposition in writing. He owns a sizable piece of property. Does he constitute more than twenty percent, please?
No, ma'am, he did not.
Uh, apparently, if there's one more test, one is to...
Do you motion to close the public hearing?
The motion closed.
Second.
All clear. Commission, all clear. Motion from the council.
Move closed? Second.
I agree with all opposed, most carries, public hearings closed on C fourteen oh four. So on special use application, S U fourteen action one, this is not blocked.
We have an address of twenty-three fifty Hall Johnson Road, Suite one forty-five. This is the multi-tenant building that's generally located just east of the Hall Johnson and Heritage Avenue intersection. Currently is owned by a commercial. The request this evening is a special use permit to allow for massage services. That's the applicant's attempt to provide specifically a reflexology in a nineteen-hundred square foot lease space within this multi-tenant building. Given the current mix of tenants, a hundred and forty parking spaces are required, or a hundred and forty-seven on site. And I'll introduce Mr. Craig Blumen to speak.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Planning and Zoning Commission, excuse me, I'm Craig Blumen. I'm here on behalf of Hall Johnson Center. This is William Tang, he's the owner of Good Cliff Reflexology. Pardon my voice. I think you know Hall Johnson Center is a multi-tenant retail center, does, serves the neighborhood in that area. We're excited to have Good Cliff Reflexology as a new tenant in the center. We think there'll be a complimentary tenant in the center that'll be right next door to anti-fitness, both health uses, and we think there'll be a terrific mix with the rest of the other uses in the center. Will is an experienced, successful operator, and we're excited about coming into the center. Do you have any answer any questions?
I have several questions. Will the, I noticed there wasn't a floor plan with our materials. Is it all in one big room, or is there a back part and a front part?
It, it is. I thought, I thought that the floor plan was, it, it is from side to side. It is all one big open room. So Will can address the business more specifically, but my understanding is it's one big open room, and, and the customers come and sit in chairs, and it's all an open area.
You can sit in from the side, the sidewalk from the front?
Yes.
The employees, are, are they certified or licensed as?
Well, it is a reflexology of technician, they don't require license.
So what kind of training do they have? Is it just anybody on the street can do?
No, no, they, uh, they have some experience in massage, like foot massage, training, but they're not certified like massage therapists.
And then are they wearing scrubs, or what kind of, is it look more like a medical?
Yeah, it's more like therapeutic, uh, therapeutic thing. Use pressure by using their hands. Apply pressure on the foot and head and shoulder to relax the muscle. In open space, unlike in different rooms like massage business, it's all in open practice that is in open space.
Thank you.
Other questions?
All right, questions from the council?
I just have to say something. I've had reflexology many, many times, and it's one of the most amazing things for your feet. I just, this last week, I had a bad cold, and because of the different pressure points, it actually cleared my nasal passages, and I haven't been stopped up since I went. So I realize that there are different licensing requirements in different areas, and I know that that's been certainly a problem in some of the nearby cities with reflexology. So it's certainly important that they have the proper training to do this, but I'm just telling you, I think it's the best thing in the whole wide world.
Be brief.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Do we have any letters or petitions?
No, ma'am.
Any one wishing to speak?
Yes, sir.
Do you motion to close the public hearing? Do you close? Back to you, all clear.
Commission closed, most, uh, questions from the council?
The motion held subject to consideration of perhaps placing some limitations on the number of, of times or the duration that applicant can table a request. And with that direction given from that meeting, some wording that's in the back and I was going to brief it, basically, what we're saying here is that an applicant can ask to table a request no more than once, it must be scheduled, no later than the next scheduled public hearing. It's also pertains to requests that have moved into a planning and zoning commission's deliberations. However, that does not require the, not require situations for city staff, the city council, or planning and zoning commission to ask to table a case. I'll be happy to answer the question.
Was there a question, Mr. Chairman?
Question?
No questions. Special from the council. Apparently not. Any letters, petitions?
No, ma'am.
Any one wishing to speak?
Yes, sir.
Do you motion to close?
Second.
All clear. The council, I mean, the commission has voted closed, motion from the council.
We're closed?
All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. That completes the public hearings between the commission and the council. The commission will wait for a name in the meeting room for the ride. It's a public meeting. Invited to attend that meeting or to stay with us here in the council chambers as we consider our public agenda. Do we have any citizens' comments?
Yes, ma'am. Carl Young, forty-one thirteen, Metro Drive.
Mayor Tate, Council, Bruno, John Boyle. Last month, I left this council room very angry. I swore I'd never come back to this meeting. Unfortunately for you, my neighbor dropped me out of it. He said you're probably one of the only people that stands up and says what you feel, you know? Gosh darn it, he's right. And I can thank Darlene and Christopher not let me go on the P and C because you're right, I would have been a hellion on that court, council. I would have been a hellion at that court, council. But that being said, this council made a decision based on 7% of 2,700 people. I still don't understand it. Not... That also being said, I have been in this council meeting now for several years and I've enjoyed every minute of it. After the Farina thing happened a little while ago, I started wondering just what's going on. So, I started doing some looking and some checking. This council and the P and Z has approved many things that had conditions to it. How many of those conditions have really been checked out? For instance, Jake's Burgers was supposed to be a hamburger place. Several meetings, I've heard complaints that it's no longer a hamburger place. What changed? The 7-Eleven store, which was supposed to have 60% produce, I believe, if I remember correctly, was not supposed to have controlled parking. Doesn't. Who's bothered to check? Farina's. The last time we talked about that, I specifically went into the restaurant and found out that they had a meeting room in the next room over. And then I was told that it's going to rest in for a long time. I thought we weren't allowing too many restaurants. There were winery, there were wine tasting rooms. What changed? Later on this evening, you're going to discuss La Perina, La Pret, La Prette. I read that whole thing over. If I was a neighbor, I would be livid that a restaurant can tell me they're going to have a private party and I should eat it. My biggest question to you, councilman, and the P and Z, unfortunately, they're not here, is who is responsible for checking to make sure that what you're telling them to do is being done? Because right now, in my opinion, it's not being done. We have a hamburger place that's a tavern in my terminology. We have a 7-Eleven that's probably pushing more beer and soda than they are produce. And we had a restaurant that was a winery that just was made legal because they finally figured out a way how to sell beer and wine and get away with it. Yes, I'm angry. I had a lot of faith in this council to be doing the right thing. And when I started looking, I have to start wondering. I again asked the question. I was on a zoning appeal board and six months later, we would go back and see just what happened that we've made sure that what we approved was done. How many people in this council or how many people in this administration knows bothers to go back and check? Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Steven Swatilla, 3408 Worthing Hills Lane.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. My name is Steve Swatilla, a 20-year resident of Grapevine. And I'm speaking for the resolution of point number eight, authorizing the purchase of multimedia services to videotape the council meetings and the planning and zoning commission meetings. As business owner, it's hard for me to get to these meetings. I can only make a few a year, but they're valuable to me as a citizen of Grapevine to see what's going on and be involved in discussion. But if these meetings were videotaped and archived, then I could go back in the wee hours of the morning when my business allows it and see what's going on and then have comments and follow up on that. So, other cities have been doing it for a long time. The technology is there, it's really easy, it's cheap, but that would be really important to me as a citizen of Grapevine. Thank you.
Loopy Albedera Swatilla, 3408 Worthing Hills Lane. Mayor, council members, I'm here to support the videotaping of our city council meetings and the placement of these videos on public media, whether it be online or TV. I'm mostly here because I believe in transparency of government and our great city deserves this. Transparency can only reflect positively on our city and our community. I also believe in modern technology. The accessibility of these recordings to our citizens at their convenience can only increase participation in our government. Our neighboring cities have been doing it since the 90s and 2000s and our great city should be modernized in this way. Thank you.
Aram Azapur, Haribox, 2645 Grapevine.
Mr. Mayor, other members of the city council, various city staffers, and the greater audience present, greeting. My name is Aram Azapur, my homeowner and president of City of Grapevine. I'm here to urge the city council to vote yes for the item number eight for the new business section, which is the videotaping and archiving of the public meetings of the council, as well as, I understand, zoning and planning commission. Transparency and such are good, but to me, accessibility is a bigger concern. Having these meetings recorded and available from the city's website at any time and to any interested Grapevine citizen is useful to getting the citizens aware of public affairs of the city government. And the citizen should not be getting interested in city government only when things go wrong. That, to me, is too late. For instance, as an example, folks living in Detroit 30 years ago thought they were living in a wonderful city, but obviously, things were not that rosy then. So, I've heard from the council people that citizens can just pick up the phone and call if there's an issue. I beg to differ and I hope accessibility is considered. Another citizen comment that having available these recordings at any time is wonderful and I couldn't agree more. I think that having them available and accessible is only going to encourage the citizens to get, you know, participate in the affairs of our city government. I hope you vote yes for the recording and archive. Thank you and everybody.
Kathleen Thompson, 3317, Worthy Law.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm speaking for myself and my family tonight for agenda item number eight, video recording and archiving of city council meetings. I grew up next door in Grapevine and... grew up next door in Colleyville and shortly after I graduated from Grapevine High, the city of Colleyville began video recording and archiving their city council meetings on VHS tapes. Now, modern technology allows hardworking, taxpaying residents an eye-opening view of their government as it happens with live streaming and even archiving to the exact agenda items that they would like to see. Grapevine residents deserve to know what decisions you all are making and how. Trying to follow along with your current audio recordings of five male council members plus a male city attorney plus a male city manager, seven male voices is very difficult, even for someone who attends council meetings regularly. It's not helpful and it's really outdated. I'm grateful to work with a dedicated group of volunteers who've been video recording these council meetings since last summer. Residents and even reporters have told me how helpful these videos are to staying up to date with city business. We've been called repeatedly to cease being a Grapevine. We video record and archive with a small, inexpensive digital camera and we upload to YouTube for free, like many municipalities do. Since last summer, our videos have been seen more than 700 times, so we know that this is something that Grapevine residents want. Transparency in government is something that some of our neighbors can brag about on their city websites and I want my municipal government to embrace transparency, accountability, and accessibility to citizens whenever it can. This is such a perfect opportunity tonight. Please vote for agenda item number eight. Thank you.
Tam Yacko, nine twenty, Ravenswood.
Hello, Mayor, council. This is the agenda I came to speak about. I had two New Year's resolutions this year. The first one is to lose weight and get back to my pre-baby, pre-marriage weight. And the second one is to just be more involved in the Grapevine community. And one of the ways that I'm trying to do that is to attend council meetings. And I can't always do that. And when I couldn't make last meeting, I went online to see what was available besides the agenda and it was the body recording. It's harder to follow along, I think, than it is like a YouTube video or something like that because the visual cues aren't there. So, I'm just here tonight to voice my support for agenda item number eight, so hopefully we can get some video recording with attachment to agenda items. So, in case I miss a future meeting, then I can catch it and share it with my friends, too. Thank you.
John Glover, 514 West Hudgens Street, in addition to William Schmitz, 308 S. Street.
Hi, my name is John Glover. This is Willie Schmitz. We're residents of downtown Grapevine, me on the west side of Main Street in the museum district, Will lives on East San Francisco district.
You need to speak into the microphone.
Thank you. We've been residents of downtown for about 10 years. We love to be living downtown. We want to thank you guys for everything that you've done to make this the place we like living, but we're really concerned about the track on Main Street, both auto versus citizen. First off, it's my understanding that if there's not a posted speed limit sign in the state of Texas, the speed limit is third. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Grapevine is... Main Street between Dallas and Northwest Highway is no longer a thoroughfare. It's no longer a travel street from getting point A to point B. It's a tourist destination, a scene, venue. People going up and down Main Street at 30 miles an hour are constantly looking in stores. They're texting to say, "I'm at this restaurant, where are you?" There's a lot of distractions, so we feel that as people that are on Main Street virtually every single day, the speed limit is too fast. Couple that with the fact that you've got pedestrians that are constantly bolting out between cars, not using the crosswalks. Both of us are guilty of those things, as well as when you do use the crosswalk, it's not observed by cars. I've had people blow their horns behind me as I stopped to let someone go through the crosswalk. The third and final thing is the parking on Main Street. Human beings have a challenge to parallel parking and even though there's a double yellow line, absolutely no one observes it. Anytime you try to park on Main Street, you're passed. More than once, I've almost had the front end of my car taken off. I've been given the bird, had people blow their horn at me because I tried to park it with a parallel park after being signaled. We spend a lot of time in downtown Grapevine long foot and we just feel that unless something is done to address these issues, and we're glad that you guys are one of the brightest of us, we don't have an answer, there's a tragedy inevitably that's going to happen. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for allowing me to speak for a moment here. I grew up in Carrollton and my dad had a small business there and his friends had businesses in Grapevine. Grapevine, especially to me, especially Main Street. I remember going down Main Street many times, going under the railroad trestle and going Fort Worth and all that. And I'd like to see 20 mile an hour speed limit. I think it'd be appropriate from Northwest Highway down to Dallas. And if there is a tragedy in the American district, offset that, we get a transportation center down in Dallas, Main, it would be appropriate. The speed limit is 40 miles an hour up to Dallas and people, you know, I guess they think that it's 40 miles an hour through downtown because that's the last thing you see. If there could be a posted 20 mile an hour speed limit, I think it really helps the situation. Thanks a lot. Grapevine's a great place to live. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
For your comments tonight. Mayor? We next have a public hearing.
Excuse me, Mayor Tate.
Look, she's up there. This person wanted to hit one right behind you, Paul.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
All right. We've got one more.
Okay, Mike Morris at 8:49 Riverside Drive.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'll make mine real short. It's very unusual. I come up here and I agree with everybody that was here behind me. Main Street needs to be slowed down and that was not on the sheet. I actually stopped for pedestrians in the middle of a block and some people are... I guess they wait like their IQ of me is or something like this, but we need to slow it down. I see large trucks and everything. It used to be part of the state highway and that was a little more difficult, but my understanding is now we could slow it down. Anyway, I'm here for something else. I'm 100% in favor of recording the council meetings, the P and Z meetings. I think we should have good video and good sound coming out of here, but I have a few concerns. I read the two short pages that were in the folder... I'm using the wrong term, packet. And I've talked to a couple of council members just a little bit about it. Before you do this, I want to make sure that everybody has looked at the contract very carefully. I do this type of work not for cities. I'm not interested in doing it for any cities. I try to avoid working for cities, no offense, but I do it for law offices, medical clinics. I've worked for Baylor Hospital, et cetera. You've got to put the proper controls on it or you can really get into trouble. Things like... Basic questions. Security on how it's kept. It's very easy to modify video and sound. I would hope that it's secured, that it's under the control of the city secretary. You've got to make sure that it's covered. Storage. The storage has got to be secure without going into long things about the problems with IT. I no longer shop at a little store we've got over here right near the new police station, the fire station, I won't use her name. When things are recorded and turned on, it's got to be made very clear that 100% of the meeting must be done intact, but if there's a break and things like that... I'll give you a good example. I wear a hearing device because I'm rather hard of hearing, to put it bluntly. When you go and break, you should have mute buttons on all those microphones and they should be turned off. And it shouldn't be a situation where you have to do it. It should be done by the audiovisual people, then turned back on. With this device, I can hear conversations up there. Never heard anything embarrassing or anything, but you can hear it. So, it's very important that you look at all of those conditions before you do a sole source vendor. It took me about 10 minutes to find four other sources in the state of Texas that do this type of work. So, I definitely want you to do it, but be sure you put enough controls on how you do it. Simple as that. Thank you.
All right. Are you happy tomorrow over there?
No, Mayor.
Now, we will open a public hearing to consider the proposed 40-year CDVG development block grant program, Street Reconstruction Project. Stand by.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The 40th year CDVG project proposed is the 500 block that is Texas street between Austin and Dooley Street that will be comprised of reconstruction of the roadway, asphalt roadway, concrete curb and gutter, concrete driveways, concrete sidewalks. The total project estimated cost is $187,000 and change. Of that, roughly $163,000 is construction and about $24,000 is engineering. This public hearing was advertised in the Four Horse Stars Hologram on January 29th. And there are questionnaires, I tell you this every year, we have questionnaires in the back of the room if anyone wants to fill one out, just make any comments they choose to regarding the CDVG project, a program that we had earlier. So, with that, I'll have to answer your questions.
Why do we keep doing this in this historic district? We pour concrete streets over there all the time and they don't last any time in this black dirt. They crack and you got... Well, most of them... Why do we use concrete in this historic district in that black dirt where it won't last any time at all? Why can't we use asphalt?
We are using asphalt.
We are using asphalt. She said concrete.
For about the last... Well, concrete curb and gutter. For about the last three or four years, we've been using asphalt streets.
We are now using...
Asphalt.
Okay. All right, very good. That's my only concern because they don't last.
And we're requesting council authorization to submit the application to Tarrant County. And we're requesting council authorization to submit the application to Tarrant County.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
All right. Well, we've got to take the testimony as public.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. I'm sorry.
Oh, do we... Anybody have any more questions for Stan? If not, do we have anyone wishing to speak, either for or against the proposal?
Then I'll move mine. I'll make my motion to close the public hearing. Sorry about that.
Motion to close, go to the chair.
Second.
And we have a second. All in favor, all opposed, the public hearing is closed. Now consideration of the supplemental of the application is in order.
I'll move for approval, the supplemental for your community development block grant.
Second.
All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. All right. New business, consider awarding a construction contract for the twenty thirteen water line improvement project for A-Tech Utilities, Mr. Lester.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The exhibit that you see on your screen is in effect the project that we're recommending award tonight. It's two segments. One extends from Shady Brook up to the roughly southern limits of what was constructed with the Lake Point addition, which is sort of the bear area of this, in this particular photograph. The second phase, or second component, is on the north side of Dove Loop and extends up to Dove Loop north of the Dove and Dove intersection. It's roughly three thousand linear feet. It will provide a twelve inch water line connection from Shady Brook up to Dove with the twelve inch line that was constructed with Lake Point. This line is on our master plan. Dove tank issues in the summer where we have some problems keeping that tank full. Five bids were received. The low bid was Greatex at six hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Staff recommends award of that contract. In addition, we recommend an award of twenty-five hundred dollars to H and E J Associates for G-Tech Services, which basically the density test on the backfill in the trenches. And then finally, staff recommends a contingency appropriation of five percent of the project, thirty thousand dollars. Now we have to answer any questions.
Real quickly, one more time, what's the idea behind the contingency? And as, because I'm keeping track of something, you know, and expect an explanation at the end of fiscal year.
Okay, Shay, in the old days, we would budget a project, and we would have a contingency in that budget that we maintained in public works. And then we would come to council with recommended expenditures for engineering, construction, and then we would hold that contingency, and if we had some additional expenses that we needed to fund, it might be a small change order to the construction that didn't require council approval, any of that type of thing, we had that contingency. Finance now wants the council to appropriate that contingency, and that's why it's before you tonight. That's basically what John told me.
That old boy.
You walked down with a red stain.
Thank you very much, Stan. Even in the silence, you...
All right.
I'll move for approval. There's no questions, unless it's a public hearing. Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Council now consider a resolution authorizing a sole source purchase of multimedia services. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. The concept of multimedia services or live video streaming of council meetings is discussed at the November nineteenth workshop of council, providing the direction that we also include the streaming for planning zone commission meetings. Staff contacted three vendors which provide multimedia services for live streaming and on-demand viewing. So they take our agenda, it's uploaded into the system, it's bookmarked as council, you know, you can see on your iPad, your iPhone, then the video is attached to that portion of the meeting. So if you're interested in, say, this item here, then you go on, you touch it, similar to an iPad, it brings up the video, it brings up the agenda item along with that, with the agenda. So you have that at your hand to be able to follow through. It answers some of the questions, trying to listen to video without having the minutes in front of you to be able to follow along. The reason we chose Swaggett after council, after, I'm sorry, after staff reviewed, is the fact that Swaggett is the only vendor that provides a hands-free total remote operation of the product of video here in the chambers. Also, in addition, since we're doing the planning zone conference room, you know, someone is in there now, someone would have to sit, and video monitor that in addition to here in the chambers. So you're looking at two additional staff members that way. This procurement is a sole source, with them being, you know, the road and the fact that not having to hire the technicians. The one-time purchase of the equipment that's listed in your agenda item is one thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-five cents to install the five optic cables into the A and V room. Fifty-six thousand, forty-six dollars for video coders, the mixer, the cameras, the installation, the wiring for the chambers here. We'll have four cameras, so not only will you get a view this way, you'll see the speaker. It will also, the system allows that when there's a PowerPoint presentation, that while the person is speaking, that PowerPoint then is made available, you know, on the video. It's going to take approximately thirty to sixty days for the installation of the equipment before the system went online. There is an annual subscription fee for the remote operation of the cameras. The video production, the indexing, which I spoke of, and the video hosting or archiving, which would remain on Swaggett's website, which still remains property of the city at any time. They would host that material since video and audio is quite large, taking up space on servers on their end. But it would be mirrored as though when you go to the city's website, you're, you would actually be going through Swaggett to view that material. And for the subscription for fifty meetings, which would cover the council and the planning zone commission, the annual cost is sixteen thousand, two hundred dollars. Staff recommends approval of this resolution declaring Swaggett Productions as the sole source vendor to provide the remote camera operations for the multimedia service, equipment purchase and installation, a one-year subscription contract, and appropriating of the expenditure of seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-five cents for the total project from the unappropriated amount of the general fund. Cities of Allen, Addison, Richardson, Southlake, Houston, Dallas, Irving, I S D, all you saw at Swaggett currently. If you have any questions, I'd like to ask, answer those for you.
I have a question. They're the group that made the presentation to us originally, right?
Yes, correct.
And if I remember correctly, to sort of answer Mr. Morris's question, they did talk about how they do it off-site in terms of turning it on and off, and they also talked about how they store it, as I recall. Okay, it's the same that we talked about, so we're comfortable with that. Okay, thank you.
We have a resolution, of course. Do we have a proposed contract with these people?
Yes, sir.
That wouldn't have been possible.
I failed to put it in there, I'm sorry, sir.
I don't have a contract. How long a contract is it?
It's for a one-year annual subscription.
And will we be able to tell what the use is or public?
I don't recall that being in there, you said.
Yes, we should go put a counter on the same website.
Yeah, go up to the podium.
Yeah, Jen, come to the podium.
I think it'd be very easy to put a counter on the link on the website if it goes over Swaggett, so you know when the time's only went there.
That's a good idea. Let's go try it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jody, are there any increases annually, I mean, in the contract that we're not looking at?
It's just a one-year subscription at this point.
And what about the security and storage, all that? Does the contract address that?
Yes, sir, it does.
Does the rest of the council have the contract?
Well, we got the resolution. The resolution's just a standard one.
Totally is.
Yeah.
And it's certainly a mistake to not have the contract in the packet. What I would suggest that we do is to table the item. We'll put the contract in the packet and bring it back to you at the next meeting so that you have the normal period of time in order to be able to review the contract. It's just a mistake that it wasn't in the packet. Jody said it's her responsibility, frankly, it's her and mine, I'm the one who signs those, and that was, so my apology for that.
Is there any other, if we do that, is there any other information the councils want from the show?
I think Mr. Morris made some good comments, many of which we perhaps have heard and maybe we talked about, some of which I remember and some of which I don't. So perhaps the staff could put together a memo addressing the comments he made.
Can I mention, council member, I will go you one better. We'll have the Swaggett team here to answer all those questions at the next council meeting before we ask you to act on the item. That would be great, because even tonight, some minor things may have come up, I would like an answer to. Wouldn't affect my decision on it, but I still would like some dialogue, so I would do then that we table list the next council meeting.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a section, any discussion? All in favor? All right, let's try to get the council the information we need, make sure we go with the right supplier, buy the right equipment, have the right security, sorry, the system that does what the people would expect.
Yes, sir.
All right. That brings us to the consent agenda, out of nine through nineteen. Any guests present can ask any of those items be removed for further debate at this time if there are any requests, any guests. And from the council or the staff, out of nine through nineteen is the consent, the motion is in order.
I believe that we approve items nine through nineteen.
Second.
All in favor, all opposed, motion carries, the consent is approved. We're still waiting on the recommendations of the planning zone commission, so I'll take it shortly, sales can come back as soon as they have those recommendations available, we'll consider. We got the council back up there, we'll take them now. The first, I believe, is out of twenty.
Twenty C thirteen nineteen A was approved six one with the stipulations presented by the applicant.
I'll move for approval. What stipulation?
Well, the list of things that they said they would do in terms of operations, police officer monitoring the decibel level, et cetera, the speakers in and out, it was in the packet, a list of a number of items that they would agree to be part of the request.
I made a motion for approval, I just wanted to make sure everybody heard that. I'm going to take a second, will you? You want to discuss it? Is that what's going on, or?
Do we have a motion and a second?
No, we don't have a second. There's no second. Maybe there won't be a second, but...
All right, we had a motion, we didn't get a second. I think part of what's going on is the council's trying to determine what stipulations are.
I'm sorry, would you say, Bill, what the what are? I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
The subject was stipulations. Some members of the council are trying to figure out what those are.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was in the packet. Maybe we could have staff or Larry could go over what those were. I'm sorry, Bill, they were in the original packet that they submitted.
All of those in the packet are the stipulations?
Yeah.
Yes.
Would you just go over them on so that everybody knows, please?
I'd also go over the, if you take a look at the site plan, if you could pull it out, take a look, there's a little bit more clarity with the site plan. I'll tell you what the applicant did here. The applicant has designated an area where directional speakers will be located only on a temporary basis relative to any performances or any events on the property. The applicant is also obligated that any performers will have to use those speakers, they can't bring their own equipment. Also, the location where a band was set up has been shown with a temporary screening device that be placed around the band to inhibit a noise transfer throughout the neighborhood. Along with that, the applicant is obligated to have Grapevine police officer on, due to Grapevine police officer on staff during all events to monitor the sound, and has presented some procedures that be followed on a hourly basis relative to monitoring the sound. And then in your positions is a new piece of information relative to the supermajority. I put in your packet that prior to tonight's meeting, supermajority was going to be required to approve the request. However, a number of property owners were notified, have rescinded their opposition, and now that supermajority does no longer apply.
Again, problems there before, and whether they've rescinded or not, the problem is it's too much in the wrong place, that is historic district. We never intended for restaurants to favor them, all of that, which led to all of the objections in the neighborhood. This park can be sold, and I just think it's too much, way too much for where it's at, and I can't support it in any sense.
Can I?
I urge the town to go forward and take away this restaurant as a matter of right in a wine area, because we never intended for that. We wanted the wine deal to be a buffer zone, that's why we always considered it, so I can't support it, it's just, it's a mistake, it's wrong. It's an expansion of a business that's already expanded too far where it's at.
Mayor, I don't necessarily disagree with you at all. The only thing that I'm struggling with, and the reason that I made a motion to approve this item tonight, is, and I agree that we should look at changing the ordinance relative to vintage district, because restaurants are allowed as a matter of right, and I agree we should change that, so that, we should have a discussion about that, changing it to a conditional use. The reason that I can support it tonight is because they currently, under the zoning as it exists today, can do a restaurant. We have no ability to regulate that they have a police officer on site, we have no ability to regulate the hours of operation. By giving this conditional use and allowing them to have beer, which is the only request they're actually asking for, we now have the ability to set some parameters and some rules that otherwise we don't have. And I think that's the reason that these citizens have rescinded their opposition to this. If we don't approve this, they pretty much can do what they're doing now, and the only option for the citizen is to call the police if they think there's too much noise. I feel like this gives us more control and more regulation over what they can or can't do. So to me, this is a positive step. I agree with you in terms of where it, well, that's fine, I'm just giving you my opinion. You don't have to vote for it, I'm just giving you my opinion, so.
They need to do those things even without the control. If they don't, and complaints continue, we need to enforce the ordinances that exist to the full letter of the law, and we haven't been doing that, and they hate this. We had a demo, that's what they, they come back to what some people said, and they don't have enough enforcement. So, that's just my opinion. I think I'm wrong, it was a church, then it was just a wiring, and now it's just growing and growing, and it's in the wrong spot, and that's why we're trying to destroy this district. We got people, their house, homeless major houses is coming in for downfall, and to back to residential, people are trying to move back into those houses and to convert from commercial back to residential because their values don't have some much consistency. It goes against the power of what we've done to build this town and this historic vision for years, and someone will take advantage of it, probably by an expanded, not imposed for years, and someone will take advantage of it, probably by an expanded, not imposed to it.
That's fine. I made my motion, I don't have a second, so.
We have a motion and didn't get a second. We have any further motion?
I have struggled with this O U D L. Gina has been in Great Line for a long time, and she's been a friend and held some responsible positions in this city. She's been a friend for a long time. I think the difficulty with this arose with the difficulties in the neighborhood. I've looked at the several pages of police reports when the police had to go up there because of noise issues. There's been over two dozen of them in the last three or four years. And I think that a lot of that was because of staffing problems that were there that weren't really shooting straight and letting her know what was going on, what the issues were, and I think that's very unfortunate. To me, this comes down to a question of would we approve a restaurant in that location? And I think the answer to that clearly would be no. We would not approve a restaurant in anyone's neighborhood. And that is really where the rubber meets the road with me. Currently, our vintage district allows a restaurant as a matter of right. We never envisioned a restaurant being a primary use in a neighborhood because the vintage district was to be a transitional district, one that is a buffer between other uses. We've never had a winery in a residential district other than this one, and we've never had one converting to a restaurant. Under the previous owner, I don't think there was ever a call for service there other than of a medical nature or something. It may have been one, I don't remember, I looked at a long list of items. And so the change in the use has generated some additional issues. But it still goes back to would we approve a restaurant in a historic district that is a residential area? And to me, I feel that I would not be able to support that. And so that is clearly where I am.
Not yet. Sorry. I guess what I'm really sort of struggling with is, and I appreciate your comment sharing relative to the citizens complaining, but they've worked with the citizens and they've identified some ways to actually mitigate the issues that have been going on there, and the citizens are now okay with that. And the fact of the matter is, we did zone it that allowed a restaurant. We've already done that. We did that years ago.
Ron, have a hundred percent of the citizens that have posted come back and withdrawn their opposition?
Not a hundred percent. There were two small, well, I would say that five twenty-two South Dewey Street, that applicant did not, and the applicant at three oh seven East College did not, but only a small portion of the property covered the location zone. Otherwise, everyone else did.
And the property currently has the right to be a restaurant, there's nothing that they have.
It's allowed as a matter of right, it's permitted usage.
With the ability to only sell wine and beer?
No, sir, that would be only a BYOB, the wine and beer is required a conditional use program.
Well, I have to agree with Councilwoman Spencer. I know Gina's been on a long time resident of the community and tried to work hard to make a successful business here. I remember the property was a church, it was a daycare, and then Dr. Bobby opened a winery there, and I think that really was, felt like a big buffer zone and a good neighbor in the community. Gina, I appreciate what you're trying to do, but I really just, I can't support having a restaurant out there. I realize you could do that in any way, but I can't.
Do we have any other motions?
I'll make a motion to deny the zoning case.
Do we have a second? Second. We have an option, a second. Any further discussion? No, in favor, the motion is denied. Opposed, okay. Motion. Passes, the application is denied. Item twenty-one.
CU fourteen oh one was approved, six oh and one extension.
All right. Move for approval? Okay, second to last. Any discussions? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-two.
CU fourteen oh two was approved, seven oh.
I'll move for approval.
The problem I have with this committee outside, two things. It's not big enough for a restaurant because it's not enough parking. Number two, I don't like the outside tables right across from the church property, and it just wants it in its.
We already voted on that, and Bill, we'll do the next one, aren't we?
We're voting on twenty-two.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong, I'm sorry, Bill, I'm following the wrong one. I'm sorry, go on, I stand corrected, I'm sorry. Go on, Mayor, I apologize.
Wow.
I was looking at the wrong order, Bill, I'm sorry.
Right. My problem is, is the outside tables. I don't recognize any chance for both of them to not be in the office. You know, I really don't want, I think, there again, we let, we think about it as a winery and, you know, think about a restaurant as a matter of right and the parking, which gets us in trouble in that area all over town. And so that's my concern about putting some limitations on it. And controlling the outside tables, that to me, that's just not appropriate. And I think if we act inappropriate, keep this in relation to our, or whatever, the line of industry, stop trying to use it. And I know there's, we're trying to attract wineries, and I know we're limited and so on, but it's, the use is not what I have a problem with, it's just, you know, it's a facility for what they want to do. And it is to extend, as long as they'll work with us and eliminate the outside deal. I think the problem is, without the tables outside, it might be too small. And people want these tables outside, there's drinking, more people, more capacity, and more parking. It's a vicious circle.
Well, it's on the west side, so it's going nice and warm out there in the summertime anyway, so it'd be supported if we didn't have those outside tables, is that correct?
Yeah, I understand, so, I just, I'm a brother waiting till we remove the restaurant as a matter of right, so we have some control over it, but I would probably approve it if we didn't have outside tables because of use. We have other uses that are in the area or going to be in the area, so you can't complain about the use. It's, you can't complain about, I think, where the tables are, if they were in the back in the front, that's where the parking is. It wouldn't be offensive to me, but that's asking too much for people to be going to church and people to go to wine.
Who taught that, and about limiting its money through statute?
There was any discussion about that?
No.
Does applicant have any feeling about that? And you live without those outside tables?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, we feel it's paramount to have those tables on the outside. One, as you stated, the capacity area. We've taken every provision we could to put this on the opposite side of the main church facility and make sure we're within the guidelines and regulations in accordance with the T A B C and the state law. We more than exceed that. We, I can, I can understand your position, I really can, sir.
It's really bigger than that because the church wanted to expand by those buildings and use them for parking and other things, and we didn't want just to continue to buy houses in the historic district in time, parent down. So they finally agreed to work with us that they wouldn't buy anymore, and they would work with us on parking, and we'd work together trying to have parking lots. And to me, when they've done that, it would be bad judgment for you and us to do something that was very offensive. I don't think that his would be that offensive, but I think just the outside stories, people parking there, laughing and talking, it's just not a good deal for you or for us. I like to have it, I know that it's outward and additional, but the problem is, we got limited parking, public parking, not on church property, but limited parking on your property, and those tables just add to the number of customers you can handle.
Mr. Mayor, we looked at the total space and our occupancy we require, we're not really adding to, it's actually complementing, we feel, the area. And when we, when we look, what we took our, what we looked at was what is already happening in the city and what's happening. Most people want to be outside, seventy-seven degrees today. You know, they, I understand, but that's, that's part of the decision in the business model and the plan that is paramount, we believe. The reason we specifically chose that site is because right now, we have people putting things right out on the main street where it's hard even walk up and down. We're trying to be the least offensive we could. We are very sensitive to church, any other religious organization, Boy Scouts and so forth, or form military veterans. We fought for your rights to do these things. We also fight for the basic premise that we should be allowed to put this if we meet the code. We're not trying to set up a bar where we have no outside facilities, speakers, and those things that you talk about, and we put it on the farthest part that we could. As a matter of fact, we're tied in between another building. You would have to make a very concerted effort, sir, to be, to even enter or come in that. It's off the road, it's even further back behind our building, so it's not even with the front surface. It's offset in the back, and as far as relative to parking, sir, you know, the amount of spaces that we have, I would, I would say far exceed what anybody has in the city already, and we try to minimize the impact of the area. We do not see our winery, just like I don't believe any other business here sees itself as a single source destination. I do not envision thirty people driving their cars to our winery. I envision people have a clustering effect, sir, that the parking will be addressed, that...
Are we limited to how?
Yeah, I understand, I apologize, sir. I just.
Are we going to go there because of public hearing?
Yes, sir.
So, you know, I'd be willing if the council wanted to take the steps out and you could try to work out something to make sure we don't make a mistake for you or us. Look at it.
What were your hours of operation again on Sunday? You mentioned that in the presentation I didn't write down.
Yeah, right now, the allowed hours are from eleven to nine. Now, are those hard and fast times? Sir, supply and demand is going to limit that. Is there some consideration where we can back it? Also, it doesn't interfere with the church hours? That's possible, we don't have an objection to that, but obviously, we want to close out a whole day because now we're going to be held to a standard where our other competitions and wineries. And plus, when is most of your people coming down to Great Line? I understand, they are coming down there for the church, but what's going to happen on festivals? What's going to happen on Great Fest? What's going to happen on May Day? What's going to happen on the wine train? To put that very limitless is one that we don't feel that we can comply with.
Listen, I ask you a question. We're outside the public hearing, so I think we're going to have to be careful.
Yes, sir.
May I ask you?
I think if we don't have an consensus, we need to take what there's something else or reopen the public.
I mean, if I may to ask a question about something that's shown.
All right, be sure to answer her question, don't just.
Yes, sir, I follow that.
To clarify, I'm looking at the drawing of your site plan, and this outside seating, which is the topic of our discussion, on the south side of it, it shows optional gate. You've got a gate, you've got some kind of a little fence around that that is some sort of a visual barrier to these tables. How tall is that fence?
Correct, ma'am, we will have that space. Those things will probably be somewhere, I would say, four and a half to five feet tall, four and a half feet tall maybe?
Will they be a see-through fence, or will it be something that you cannot readily see completely through?
On the front area of that facade, if it faced the church, we could make that non-see-through. I have to check with the building, but we could do the side in some kind of wrought iron.
And so at the back, that seating area does not go all the way back to the south side of your building, whereas it is up flush with the front of your building. Would it be possible to move that back to the south so that it doesn't come up flush with the front of your building?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's a possibility, so we don't.
Yeah, that can happen, that's not a problem.
Okay, and so if we've got some lattice work or something that is around this that would further obscure the visibility of these three tables that are outside, that would provide a visual barrier that might be a good thing for us to consider, so.
It would be better.
Okay. So, and then we could, I'm sure you'd certainly be willing to back off your opening hours on Sunday morning since you're the only winery town across the street from the Baptist Church, and I know you would work with us when it comes to those things. So now we're opening later on Sunday mornings.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're going to move this back a little bit. I think, I think, I think we need to.
And, you know, how many parking places do we have? I suppose.
I'm just trying to get this outside table. I think we need a table, I think you're right, Mayor, I think we need a table. I think we're going to have to table. I'm going to table until our next, our meeting in one of the thirty days before our meeting is in March.
Second.
Same, same date?
Was it late today?
Oh, I was just, I was prepared.
Item twenty-three. CU fourteen oh four was approved, seven oh.
Seven oh two.
I'll move for approval.
Y'all address the traffic flow and everything, you feel comfortable with the way that's going.
I think, we didn't talk about that in particular, we talked about hours of operation. It's our understanding that what we, that was part of our concern, but it appears the pumps are probably on after hours and out of the lights run all night there over those pumps, so there's probably some sales going on during that time. So the issue about not operating twenty-four hours didn't really seem, if you're selling gas twenty-four hours, it didn't really much make sense.
The facility is settled, I think, the transaction, what they have there, and if it's, if it's a parking process, it'll hurt the business more than it has probably.
I'm concerned about the traffic. I think there's some minor improvements being done to the overall property, but, you know, you'd think we'd be getting more landscaping and things like that, that property's completely lacking, and if you do that, then you're taking out more parking. It's a partial improvement to the property that I would love to see a major improvement to, I can't support it.
I agree with Councilman Lee, so I, I think some improvement of what's there, but at the same time, recognizing the traffic that'll be coming through, there would be primarily construction trailers and people going to or from the job.
and people going to or from the job site. I don't know that there's, I heard the comments, there's an effort to turn around, but I suspect most of them will either exit via what I refer to as the alley behind the building or they'll come in that way, which is not a thoroughfare street. It's actually just an alley, for want of a better term, that adjoins the property owner. And the problem to these added fence, I, I just think that there, if we're going to do something like this and there needs to be more improvements that are made to the property to address some of those concerns. I'm not going to support it.
Question for staff. Who owns that alley? Is it the city's? Is it the property owner on either side or both?
I'm not seeing anyone from public works side, so it is shown on the plat. It is right-of-way, so I'm making the assumption that it is. It is right-of-way. Am I correct, ma'am?
If it's shown on the plat that way, then it would be that way, yes.
Right-of-way. So who should be maintaining it?
Generally, we would.
City should?
If it's dedicated as right-of-way to the city, yes, we should be maintaining it.
Thank you. I want a motion to approve it on second.
Second. Just trying to keep still.
There's no second to approve. I'll make a motion to deny.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to deny. Second. All in favor of that motion? Motion passed. This is denied.
24. SU1401 was approved, 7-0.
I'll move to approve. Second.
Motion to approve and second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
AM1401, the ordinance was approved, 5-2, with the change of one word. If you look on the bottom of, where it has, the last sentence where it says, "This requirement shall not apply to requests to table presented." We ask that you change that to initiated by city staff, city council, or planning zone and commission.
I'll move for approval in accordance with the county's good work.
Second.
In favor, all opposed, my attorney. 26.
Final plat was approved, 7-0.
Looked at the city council, approved the second of findings in the final plat of law on one clause and made some dental addition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you for your recommendation. Try to place the line of honor commission for this recommendation. It completes the council agenda. So motion to adjourn is in order.
We have a chair.
Do we have a motion? A second?
Sir.
All in favor? All opposed?